Okay. The pledge. Ryan's gonna do this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. You gotta come on up with Ryan.
Kenny David.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Ron Vaughn.
Yep.
Brad Newbacker.
Here.
Mark Serber.
Present.
Any additions or corrections, commissioners, to the agenda?
Ryan's here.
No.
For everything.
Item two, public comment. This is the first public comment. This is agenda items only. Three minutes. Is there any public comment in the room? Is this related to an agenda item? We are. Want to come on up?
Chris Christiansen.
Got three minutes, sir.
Okay. Proposed changes to section 2.10 ordinances existing verbiage. It's got a 25-year history of the existing ordinances at many weak spots when it comes to being understood and/or enforced. Days versus dates, et cetera. New proposed changes to section 2.10, I feel drafted over the last one and a half years by ordinance enforcement personnel on your staff and planning and zoning commissioners. Several months of open public meetings have been held to get to this final approved rewrite. New rewrite seeks to improve issues such as potential of health and safety violations well accepted required in the area of campers, the gray water dumping that may be and probably is occurring. Reduced property values due to owners of campers violating the existing ordinances, including increased use of prohibited porta potties, et cetera. This leads to a reduction in the revenues for needed county responsibilities. I'm asking you all to do what is needed to enhance property values. Enhance public health and safety, improve the enforceability of the ordinance, reduce existing and future blight issues. To do the right thing for the 90% of Ogumaw County property owners who follow the rules, obey the written ordinances, and protect not only their own property values, but also the value of adjacent neighbors. Keep Ogumaw County on a path of continuing development and improvements. With all of that in mind, I would also request on behalf of the residents that abide by the ordinances and laws of this community that the commissioners refrain from verbalizing at this meeting forum, as well as the planning and zoning commission meetings, that quote, "We don't need to enforce this ordinance unless we get a point." My guess is that does not set too well with the 90% of residents who follow the rules. We expect better.
Thank you, sir. Can you spell your last name for me?
Christiansen, C-H-R-I-S-T-E-N-S-E-N.
Any other public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Public comment on the phone? Item 3A. I have Jeff. Jeff's not here?
No, Jeff's appointment was, won't be able to do that until April, so.
This is updated. Okay. Brian Stein, building inspector, related to vehicle purchase. Hi, Brian.
Hi, how are you?
I'm okay. How about yourself?
Good. Well, I'm looking to replace two of our vehicles. Well, the only two we have, because they're in need of repair. And we do have money in our fund balance, so I'd like to use some of the money in our fund balance to purchase two new vehicles. And I believe you guys have them in front of you. I got other quotes, but this quote, that was $8,000 cheaper than the last two quotes that I've gotten. And these trucks are being built. It might be, should be available in June, July. So I'm looking to get approval to sign the purchase agreement with these guys and get those coming.
What, why two trucks?
Because we have two old trucks. Want to replace the two.
I'm asking.
Yeah.
So you guys can't able to share one truck?
No, we don't go to the same places.
Okay. And you guys are out at the same times?
Pardon?
And you guys are out at the same time?
Yeah.
Appointments and checks? I have no idea.
Between 10:00 and 2:00, we outrun around doing our inspections.
Okay.
Explain the differences in inspections that you and Craig do.
I do the building inspections and solar erosion. He does plum inspection, mechanical inspections, and electro inspections.
Okay.
So he's pulled in different directions than what I am. We do end up going to the same places, like we were at my years, both same morning. But nine times out of 10, we're going to different places at different times. Then like my framing inspections have to be done after his inspections are done, because I gotta catch anything that's drilled, cut, and notched. It's not supposed to be.
Didn't we have one of these vehicles on our request?
There was a request for up to 10,000 from the building department.
Okay.
Yeah, but you guys didn't bring that in.
What do you mean?
So it was when you had your meeting last week?
Yeah.
Yeah, they skipped over that and went to something else that I think is.
It's on the list.
Yeah.
It's still on there?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you guys pulled it off.
No.
Oh, well, yeah.
We talked about it in pretty big detail.
Must have been at the end then. Because I listened to it for a while.
Randy was here. He talked about a vehicle.
Yeah. Talked about a lot of vehicles, but yeah, but it's on the list. I can tell you that.
Okay.
All of a sudden, it's.
I mean. Um, that sure, I mean, I don't know how soon that stuff's gonna be ready. But if I need to wait for that to get an answer, these vehicles won't be available.
Where are these coming from? Ford?
Gornell. And.
Through my deals.
Yeah, so my deal.
Their next dealership has been adopted by the state of Michigan to, for everybody's plans for my deal.
Right. For municipalities.
Yep.
There is more than enough in the fund balance for the building.
Yeah.
130,000 is.
I think I had given you his copies of that.
Yeah, it's on there.
Yeah, this was from the audit, and then they have the ones that are BSNA shows. And they're also.
Him. He's planning and zoning under the building, in, associated with.
No, separate. Separate.
Building and zoning is a general fund department, so that's why you saw them combining the equalization on that other vehicle.
Thoughts, guys?
Boy, I think it's, yeah, I think it's a good time to do it. They have the, the fund is there. What else do we, what else do we use this money for?
Exclusively building. That's it.
Right.
You don't use it for wages or anything else.
Theoretically, if there were a slow construction year, there weren't a lot of permits.
Then we may.
You'd have a fund balance there to help supplement for full-time employees. That's not the case this year. I doubt that'll be the case next year. So I think it's a pretty safe.
Your fund, your fund balance is 145,306. Am I looking at that right?
That's what the BSNA thing shows, but the audit, which she can explain that more than me. The BS. Going 130.
Giving you like current, like right now.
Yeah.
Number you want to rely on is the most recent audit at the 130.
At 138, 828.
In all likelihood, you're gonna see that number grow this year, would be my guess. I mean, just, you're not.
Yeah, it works.
But it's kind of viewing that way, so it'll probably be higher. That 145 number that you're seeing right now is just a flow in real time.
Mr. Serber.
I am.
Mr. Vaughn.
I agree.
Mr. Newbacker.
We always had two vehicles anyway.
Right, correct.
Get them while you can.
We bought those.
That price.
Within three months apart when we bought those last. We had no bought used ones at that time, but.
Anything else?
Are we putting that?
No, that's all that was.
Are we putting that 10,000 towards that, or? You don't have to make that call yet, because if you decide to do that, we can always transfer the 10,000 into the.
On the road.
Yeah. Offset it.
I thought I'd just ask for a little bit. Might be easier.
And you thought we shot you down.
I did, because I thought, well, they passed over it at the first part of the meeting, but must have went to the end.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Peter. Planning and zoning administrator, related to zoning ordinance tax amendment, here 1-22.
Good morning.
Karen.
I think as we parted last Thursday, we wanted some turning opinion on the proposed amendment.
Yep.
I did forward that to Tim. He said he did email it to you. I don't know if you all got it, had a chance to review it. I have copies here for you.
Just got it today.
Yes.
I read it, but what you got? What you got printed out?
Do you want to explain?
Did you need one to begin?
No, I have one. I printed it out, but I haven't, I didn't read it very well.
Um, really, the only, the only issue that was brought up was with the sign portion of it. Um, all the other amendments were they were agreeable with, or no concerns with them. Couple of issues in the sign ordinance, which, which I would agree with. Ironically, those, or the very few changes that we made were to add some of that language in there. And we will pull that. We were recommended by Tim Perron there to, that can be pulled from this amendment. The others can be voted upon. And we will fix those and then bring them back in a future day, the tax amendments for the, for the signs. We have a couple of other tax amendments we discussed last night, so we will make those changes, necessary changes to the sign ordinance, and then bring that back at a later date.
Do you guys have a meeting last night? Did any of us, I know there's been some concerns voiced at the last meeting. Did anything change?
No, not from this, other than I did, I did give them.
Besides?
When I had talked to, prior to him issuing this, when I talked to Mr. Perron, there were a few things verbally that he had told me with the sign ordinance, which he did reflect in there. So we did bring those up at the planning commission last night. Nothing was voted upon or anything like that, but those are needed changes. If you read that, there are. Whenever you have something and you leave that up to the discretion of a public official, you need to have some data to back that up. So for instance, in this particular case, like with mechanical sign movement, allowing that decision to be left to the zoning administrator is, is not a good thing unless there are parameters within the sign ordinance that he, that they have to follow. So so for instance, it would say, these are allowed, these aren't allowed. So to make it clear and concise and make it easy for everybody to understand it, and to eliminate that possibility that I do that differently from one person to the next, to the next, to the next. That's, those should be removed.
Commissioners had some concerns about the zoning ordinance. Mr. Serber. No concerns though? Mr. Scott?
No, no, I'm fine. Of course, I said. No, I understand what's all going on.
Commissioner, you're on. Mr. Newbacker?
Well, the only one I'm not in agreement with is the back to it again. The recreational vehicles and where they can be stored on your lot. Reference to the front yard. Not all landowners in our county have a means of putting their campers in any other yard.
So that's one of the definitions within the, there are some definitions in the ordinance that I'd like to correct. That's, that front yard definition is one of them. When it says no storage in the front yard, what that front yard actually means is a front yard setback. So every zoning district has a setback at the front where you can't build or put anything in. Most districts is 25 feet. Few of the other districts, 50 feet. So that's the area that they're referring to. So it just can't be in that area where we wouldn't allow you to build a house or put a shutter or anything like that, too. Can it be in front of the house? Yes, as long as it's not in that 50 feet from the property line. It's usually by the road, 50 feet back. So it's kind of a it's a term, and different ordinances will define that differently. For instance, West Branch Township defines that front yard as the area. So if you look at a house that's parallel to the road, it's that area from one end of the house to the other end of the house, all the way out to the road. Other ordinance define that as the setback. It's all too, in our case, it's that 50, that 50-yard or that 25-yard setback. So so for lakefront property, that would refer to the lakefront, which would be nothing within 50 feet of the lake, which is also the area we don't allow you to build any structures or put anything in there. So that's a little misleading when it says front yard. The front yard is that front yard setback.
Can we, is it, I'm sorry, change the wording on that?
Yeah, it does need to be changed. There are a couple, there are some other, other issues as well in there, too. So as, as we're finding out, and it was also the attorney's recommendation as well, too, and it's not to bring so many tax amendments to you at a time. So I know this current version has seven different ones in it, so if we can limit that to two or three, or one or two at a time, it'll be easier for you and then easier for us as well, too.
Ryan, that setting, is that from the highway right away?
So that's from wherever the right, the road right away and the property line meet.
Yep.
So it's a little misleading. It's the biggest issue I have, especially in platted subdivisions. Generally, the roads are 20, 25 feet wide, but the right of way is 60, 60. So there's generally that green area between the edge of the road and the property line that people think they own. So a lot of times I get setbacks. A lot of times I get setbacks. People measure from the middle of the road. The problem in the splatted subdivisions, that's only accurate if the road is perfectly centered on the right of way, and nine times out of 10, they're not. So I've had occasions where it's 10 feet off either way when people measure, so.
Mr. Vaughn?
I think part of my problem was the, the term recreational vehicle. If you look in your definition of recreational vehicle, that includes boats, snowmobiles, livestock. Okay, if you own property on a lake. According to what I'm reading, you have a boat in the water out in the front of your property, you're only allowed to leave it there 14 days, and then you gotta remove it the rest of the time.
We don't zone in water. We have no authority on the water. So a boat in the water makes no, makes no difference. So it's when that boat comes out of the water, it needs to be stored.
As I know, like this gentleman out Lake Ogumaw, a lot of these houses I drive by out there, and, and my folks were out there years ago before most houses were out there. A lot of people have boats and everything stored behind their, you know, back of their garages for the winter.
Sure.
They want that, or buy pieces of property across the road to store their stuff.
Right.
And that's the ones I'm hearing from that are like, now, you know, it sounds like you're gonna have to have it in enclosed storage.
Well, part of the issue that we're having on Lake Ogumaw is a lot, I think a lot of those property owners have bought properties specifically just, just to use the lake. Because if I'm not mistaken, Ogumaw's private, so.
Yes.
In order to use it, you have to be a property owner, so. So a lot, some of those people from downstate that are buying property there are coming and leaving a lot of their stuff they just wanted to, so. The recreational vehicle, the definition does cover that as well, too. So there is a, there is another portion of the ordinance for storage of vehicles as well, too, which commonly gets confused with blight. It's not the same as blight. The inoperable vehicles stored on your property aren't supposed to be there. If they're there, they can only be there for 48, 48 hours. They're supposed to be stored inside of the building. If they're unlicensed, they're supposed to be stored inside of the building as well, too. So generally, don't get too many complaints about boats and those types of things, because they're not, they're not creating a nuisance usually for people, or comparing those with campers, there's, there's not people living, so.
Well, I understand.
At least.
Um, also, how are we gonna enforce this?
That was my question, one of them.
Well, that's part of the purpose for the, the change in the language, and there's very little change to that portion of the ordinance, other than the language for, for that period of time when you've connected to water and sewer. This helps bring that into a more enforceable, because that differs for everybody. So enforcing that and starting that timeframe on one camper is different for another camper. It puts all those people, so it's fair for everybody, puts everybody on the time, same timeline, so it'll, it'll be a matter of, most of it will come through complaints. Generally, people complain if they have a problem with something.
You know, Brian runs the same thing. Specifically is going to deal with the complaints and.
That would be me.
What are the fines for each of these things?
So the process goes for an ordinance infraction. It gets reported to me. The ordinance gives me a certain amount of time where I have to deal with that complaint. If, if I find out they're in violation of the ordinance after doing an investigation, I'm going to look at it, and I issue them an issue, an order to correct. They have 30 days to correct the violation. If they don't correct the violation in 30 days, then I can issue them a civil infraction ticket. And I will have to double check in the ordinance. I believe the first violation is 50. I think it goes to 150, and then every one after that could be $500 per offense. So once they get the civil infraction ticket, it's similar, I believe, to the, the civil infractions that the police officers enforce. I think there's three options. They can admit responsibility and pay that, pay the fine. They can admit, they can admit with an explanation, or they can, they can fight it, which takes us to court. So that's the last step. And unfortunately, if, at that point, if they don't comply, then I can continue to reissue them civil infraction. So it gets more expensive each time. Technically, every day that they're not in conformance with the ordinance is an infraction. So in all honesty, takes another person 30 days. Supposed to be $50 a day. I don't think the courts ever issue it that way. Kind of at the mercy of the court when it comes to that fund as well, too.
So do we have a format, like, of what we're gonna follow? Or could you get that to us?
Yeah, we've got a complaint form. The, that format is actually in the ordinance. The enforcement is in the ordinance, so section 21.
I didn't see it, huh?
It's probably not included with your packet, because it wasn't anything we made an amendment to. It's pre-existing. Yeah, I believe it's section 21 of the ordinance.
Yeah, I'd like a copy of that, because people are asking that question.
Oh, yeah. Right now, that's our current format for, it is a civil infraction. Some communities, which goes through district court, some communities make a misdemeanors, and then they would go to circuit court. Circuit court judges are usually better with, with zoning ordinances and enforcing them for us than district court, but obviously I, I personally have an issue. If I have to write somebody a ticket for a camper, that ends up being a misdemeanor. It costs them from getting a job somewhere, because they would have to report that if they were looking for jobs, well, too, so. And generally, all misdemeanors are, it's to court. There's, there's no, not anything. But I'm fairly lenient with it. I'm, I'm not there on day 31 writing someone a ticket. I'm generally trying to contact them, talk to them. I give people time to comply. Even after I've issued an order to correct. I had one this summer that was going to comply by the middle of June, and I didn't issue them a ticket until the end of August. So and that's after trying to contact them numerous times, so.
Ryan, I think there's so much, just such a fine line between the zoning and actually blight, which I think the majority of things are actually blight.
The blight is not something that we enforce. That's up to the townships to enforce. The county can get involved with blight, but it's usually blighted areas. It's usually reserved for large, large areas. Come to mind, Flint and Detroit are probably some of those communities that maybe are doing that on a, on a large scale basis, just with large, large, large areas of land that are dilapidated or, or need to be cleaned up, so.
Have you heard about, Commissioner Serber, I think you said you would hurt some kickback on the 400 square feet? Is there, have you heard more of that?
No.
So that's the one thing that we.
Week.
So, yeah, one thing that we have is reducing that 400. I think I explained to you before, the current is 720 square feet. Reducing it to 400 square feet. If you look at that based, let's say you can build a home today for $150 a square foot, that's a $48,000 reduction. And in this environment right now, I just looked up a two-by-four-by-eight cost before I came over, and it's $8.25 right now for a two-by-four. Those were two bucks. Has Brian sent you an email? Probably two bucks, yeah, two bucks, two bucks a few years ago. I paid 910 for a two-by-four last April for, for a repair I had to do in my, in my house. The other issue we have, too, is there are, there are a lot of cabins out there that were created before our ordinance, before zoning, that are four or 500 square feet. Right now, the way that the ordinance is written, if an individual wants to put an addition onto their 500-square-foot cabin, they have to bring it up to 720 square feet. So I've had a few people that I've had to deny in the past few years, because they have a 500-square-foot cabin. They want to put a 100-square-foot extension on the cabin, because now they're there more. Unfortunately, now, I've got to tell them, you've got to go at least 220 square feet, or else you can't expand your cabin. So they legally can continue to use that, because it's grandfathered in, but unfortunately, anytime you make a change, if you're grandfathered in, you need to come up to the new standards as well, too. So and it's a it's, it's a less expensive form of, of a home for an individual. They, they will, they will be taxable. They will have to pass building code like every other home. And they provide, I think the community, and I haven't seen any studies, but I think we have a very, very big shortage of lower-income housing here in, in Ogumaw County. So you know, for instance, with the 300 jobs, I think that Meyer just, just hired. And the hospitals are always hiring, and who knows what else will come out there at that end of town with Meyer being out there. Hopefully, have the housing for people. We'll have to be commuting more. So it might be appealable with somebody, especially in this day and age. Those building costs are so expensive right now. Took a permit for a house the other day, and the builder told me it was a $700,000 home. It's pre-COVID. What would this home be? Probably less than 500,000. So those building material costs are, are sky high, and I don't see an end in sight, at least not for this year. And I imagine they will come down, but I don't know if they'll ever be what they were. So that'll help for, for people that might want a lower, a lower option, less expensive option. It doesn't need 1,500 square feet or even 1,000 square feet, so.
You'll give us a copy of the enforcement questions? Is this gonna be ready for Thursday? Next Thursday?
Um, yeah, the only thing that won't be ready will be the sign portion of it. The attorney recommended approval. Approval or going up for a vote for them, we'll just take the sign ordinance out of that portion of it, so.
Questions? We're good?
And are they going to, you know, updating the verbiage on it for Eric?
Yeah, we'll look at the verbiage on that as well, too. We'll have it on for next meeting. I think we'll be meeting again here in April, and probably probably for the next few months at least. We should have some special use permits coming in as well, too. So so, yeah, we'll pull some of that verbiage as well, too.
So we're gonna do that first before we approve it, or?
Um, these ones would have to, the language, it would have to be approved by the planning commission. We'd have to hold a public hearing. Tax amendments and map amendments require two notices in the paper, so until those notices, and we have that public hearing, we can't bring it to you until that portion's been done. So that'll be probably May timeframe. Yeah, if I, if I put notices in the paper first thing in April. But we probably will discuss some of that verbiage, depending if we hear it on it first off, or, or, or look at other, other language that might be out there and bounce it off the attorney. It could be a couple of months before that comes before.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
We have Pam Podlaski, county treasurer, related to county balances. Hello, everybody.
Hey.
Go ahead. You got the floor.
Okay. Well, I was asked to be here tonight. It was a referred back after the audit summary from the prior board meeting. I think you should all be aware that the treasurer's office is in a recovery period at this time. I feel that there was a lack of dedication to duty by previous administration and staff in that office that created the general ledger and account balances issues that we have today. I'm gonna continue to work with the resources and tools that I have to resolve the problems that exist. You all know I have a strong sense of conviction, a strong and good work ethic, as well as my team in the office. They're all dedicated to their positions. They're hardworking and we have a vision for the office that is in a much better state than, than I took over a year ago. So do you have any questions for me?
Anything with annual audit disagreed with?
There were a few things that Tim and I discussed and made a few changes to.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, because don't we have to approve the audit?
You accepted it. You don't, you don't get to approve it. It is what it is. Like, you've already voted to accept it.
Costman or Maynard Costman, you've got more work to do with them?
Yes. Yes, I'm gonna continue.
They're going to, they pledged now to give you more support.
Yes, I'm gonna continue to work with Maynard Castrian to resolve the issues. I'm not even sure if I'm saying it right. Castrian? Maynard Castrian? Yes, the firm that, that Tim hired for us. Yes, I'm gonna continue to work with them. And I am hopeful that we will have this, the issues resolved soon.
Great.
What are they? No, go ahead.
What kind of a contract you have with them? I mean, I thought we just paid them for a single audit?
No.
Or controls audit?
Right. Now, Karen, if you want to dive into the fund that you're using, internal control is done. It's this is coming from a different source.
Yep. So I can contract with them out of my tax reversion fund.
How much is it costing?
Well, it's an ongoing process. They really can't give me an estimate because of the the volume of work. Again, I, all I can tell you is it is like finding a needle in a haystack when people aren't receiving things improperly. When things are double posted, not posted, or posted months down the road from, from the time they should have happened. And there are several revenue accounts with a lot of activity. It's a lot of information to stream through to find the problems, to resolve the issues. What I can tell you is, for some of you who don't know my past or the county, I've been here for twenty-four years this summer. I actually worked in the treasurer's office for seven years in the position that was tasked with balancing the checkbook. Mark was here. When I worked for the marvelous Maggie Robinson, the former county treasurer, I balanced that checkbook every month to the penny. And it will happen again.
I don't know that. I'm just saying that how much money are we spending here?
Again,
Have we approved it?
I, you, you don't have to approve it from what Tim has told me. I can move forward with that contract without board approval.
That fund that Karen referred to, because it's actually been tested even in the courts in the state, that fund is under one hundred percent control of the treasurer, and that's it. What is the name of it again?
Tax reversion fund.
The fund that you're using.
The tax reversion fund.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, I have the tax revolving and I have the tax reversion.
Okay, so that fund is strictly under the control of the treasurer, and even in the statute, it says treasurer only makes expenditures from that fund. And so that's the fund she's using. It's not touching general fund or any other fund that we would normally go through the contract approval process for. And that unfortunate part is, you know, to say, how much is this gonna cost? Well, until we have a grasp on where the errors were, and this is the hunt. You know, everything's there, but we've got to find it. And that's, that's what's really costing. There's gonna come a point where there's, you know, the economies of scale are gonna kick in, and what we're gonna find is just not gonna be worth spending any more money for. And so that's where we're gonna need the guidance of the CPA to tell us, how do we report that on the books correctly? And then Karen's allowed then to move forward with a clean slate. So in other words, there may be five or six thousand that we just can't find. It's not, we're spending seventy thousand dollars to find it. There's an accounting process to zeroing it out is not what I want to say, but it's not even a write-off, but to recognize that it was there. But we're just not going to spend any more money trying to find it. And that's, that's the point that we want to get to. I don't think we're that far off. But I do know that our two accountants have some disagreements, and we'll make sure those are worked through. And then when we're finally here with the end product, we'll all be very confident that this is as good as it's gonna get.
Greg, you weren't here for the audit last week.
Sorry.
And, and it's also complicated because last year we did a software conversion as well, the chart of accounts conversion. So the account numbers that were being used are now different. So that complicates the search. And we had a very complicated software conversion, was a very bumpy road, and we're still dealing with some of those conversion issues. So I have a lot going on, but we're working to resolve them.
What was the, what was the amount Cindy gave us?
She was in the seventy thousand range. We started out, she was at somewhere in the six thousand range, and Maynard was in the five thousand range. And that ultimately, I believe, is where we're gonna end up. Right now, you've got, you know, two different CPAs with a little bit different of a definition on things, looking at the numbers. I think it's just a matter of working through their, you know, the philosophies the accountants use to come up with those numbers. But it's gonna be in that five to six thousand range when it's finished. When we do hit that and we hit the wall, then Karen will be back here probably with a resolution so that we can document it for next year's audit, showing what we've done, why we've done it, and we move forward.
Are the two of them communicating, Maynard and Stevenson?
Sometimes not speaking the same language, but yes.
I mean, because
We're getting them there.
What, like married or what?
Well, we got one saying seventy thousand, and we got one saying five or six. I mean, they
Sounds like husband, wife kind of deal.
Would think that, that, yeah, there would be some communication, and then that will be brought to back to us once that resolution is found.
Yes. And as I mentioned last week, I communicate with Tim on at least a weekly basis. And when Maynard's here, I take the person from Maynard, the representative, right down to Tim's office, so he hears it firsthand right from the accountant. Full transparency of what's going on is reported to Tim regularly.
Well, it was news to me that I hadn't heard that you were disappointed in the services from Maynard initially. Sounds like you guys have, have resolved your well, your complaints, your differences.
We will see.
Things are headed in the right direction.
If I have the commitment from their company that I'm looking for, which, again, they were short-staffed like everyone was over the last couple of years. So he's assured me that he has the staff to commit to me. That'll begin in April, and I hope to just punch this thing out and get that office in the shape that I expect it to be. Because, again, I set my standards high. I set the office standards high. We'll get there.
They're starting in April?
Yes. And I believe it's April thirteenth that him and his new team member will be coming back to begin working.
That's, that's the news that I was not aware of, that, that you were not satisfied with their services.
It's not that I'm not satisfied with their service. I was disappointed that I didn't have the commitment to them that they sold to us in the beginning. We all had a meeting. We sat at a table, we discussed. I gave them a task list, and they assured me we can get through that task list, and we can do it in this timeline. And well, they didn't hit the timeline I wanted them to because they were short-staffed.
You know, Ben, and in their defense, I think this became a much bigger project than what they imagined coming. I think we could agree that it's bigger than what we thought it was.
Yes.
When they were coming in.
Yes.
I think that also played into it. And, yeah, just, I think the commitment's there now. We'll see. But I'm pretty confident that probably by summer, we're gonna be where we want to be.
Do you recall how much we paid them for that internal control audit?
Somewhere in the neighborhood of seventeen thousand. But recall that a good portion of that was paid by Department of Treasury.
Right, we did get help.
Any other questions?
Brad, you see the tax reversion fund on that same spreadsheet as the county or the building department, did you?
Yeah, I'm just looking at it, too.
Okay.
Questions? Okay. Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
We got Rick Ebert, security supervisor, related to X-ray machine.
Check your, check your new agenda.
Killing me. It's still on here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought I changed that. I knew I wrote your name.
I think you guys all know the history of our
Recognize you.
We got gifted this from Ross Common. And they told us, and me and Ron went and picked it up, and Jim and Tim, and they told us, once in a while it don't work, you just gotta shut it off and turn it on. Well, it was a little bit of a stretch. It usually takes about two and a half hours every morning to get it working. It's a fine piece of machinery when it's working. It definitely keeps this place safer. It's like difference between using an axe to cut a tree down or a chainsaw. It's a tool. It's a fine tool when it works. I would like to see us again another one. I was also told by Terry Galini that they gave us that because it would cost money to get rid of it, to dispose of it. So I say we re-gift that to Ascoa or something. We can skip that part.
Did you hear anything about what possibly could be wrong with it?
I heard some big numbers to repair it, and it wasn't even to repair it. It turned out to be a service agreement. I've been talking with Tom Spencer about it. He's been doing some digging. I think it's ridiculous what they want for a maintenance agreement. It's basically just to check the radiation. It doesn't fix anything. Like, what's wrong with it right now? That wouldn't even cover it. So I turned some numbers on, on a machine. It all boils down to what's, you know, how safe do we want to have it? Because when I was doing purses manually, without dumping them out, going through everything, you're not gonna find everything. Since that's been working, I've owned lots of nights in females' purses. You know, and they, sometimes they don't even know they're there. They're like, oh, I forgot. My dad gave me that, or whatever. But it's a nice tool when it's working, and it's way better. There's no possible way we can do purses. You'd have to dump them out. She can tell me where something's at in her purse, and I can't find it. So, I mean, within that respect, if we're gonna let them bring in purses, we should have a metal detector. And if we don't, I think we should just ban the purses and limit to what people can bring in, because there's a lot of people that leave stuff in the car. I purposely didn't bring this in because they know we're there. So it all boils down to, yeah, it's a fine tool. Can we? I think it's a lot of money for one, but what's a human life worth here?
Well, I think as far as your purses, that's pretty easy for maybe incoming public.
That, that's the worst thing is a purse.
For these ladies to work here.
It's the most insecure thing that comes through is a purse. I mean, you know, it's a bag and
Right.
Like I said, when it does work, it's fine. It's, I really like it. It's, it's a great tool.
And maybe you can't answer this question. It was brought up that, that I know a plan was submitted to the state of Michigan when all this was initiated. Do you know if, to that plan, it was added that we do have an X-ray machine? Do you know anything about that?
I didn't think the X-ray machine was required, and I'm not up on what it is, but I was under the impression every courthouse had to have a security officer.
Yep.
Well, Ascoa don't have one.
We had to have a plan in place.
Right, like the security council, basically. Is that, is that what you're talking about?
Part of the plan is part of the administrative order that came from the court administrator. And, you know, we had to have the plan. Yes, we do have to have the security. I don't know what those other counties are doing, but we're at least compliant.
Right.
I don't know.
Where we want to be.
How long have we had this X-ray machine?
We did that last year.
Oh, yeah.
Hasn't it been operational for a year?
No.
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 The summer, I think.
We had it for a while, yeah.
Probably nine months, maybe.
Yeah.
I'd say that's fair.
So do you know, I'm wondering if that plan was actually, if the X-ray machine was actually added to that. Who would know that?
Probably.
Okay.
Which he wasn't able to make it tonight. And I just take my orders from him. So.
Right.
So when you say Ascoa or Iasco, are they, they have security for the courtrooms, or are you talking about the county building?
I think they just use their transporters as security that are in there.
But I mean, they, they provide security for the court.
Courtrooms. The way I understand, up in Ascoa, they have no security yard. They have no metal detector. They have nothing. You walk in and you go in the courtroom.
Well, I know. For a long time, they didn't even have a courthouse.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, that's, I guess I checked on the problem.
Iasco's got a better setup than we do. I mean, there was a couple from the security county committee that went over there.
And the parts are down south. And I hear people say they make you take their shoes off, and the floor will be wet, and somebody had a great idea. I evidently, at one time in Glad, wanted to make the women take their bras off, which what he was thinking, I have no idea. But, you know, that's something that is running that, you know, when I get that wand, I'll get a hit there, you know? If you gotta see a big bump that looks like a gun, obviously, you want to check that, but it's how much invasion do you put on somebody?
What's your guys' thoughts?
Well, I don't have a problem if they're gonna use it, though. They're gonna use it. I don't have a problem with it at all. I think it's a great idea.
I'll go over exactly what I said before. I don't want to put a dime in this machine. If we're gonna do it, we should buy a new one.
I agree.
The heck with throwing away money, because I got a funny feeling that's exactly what we would be doing, is throwing away money in that machine.
That's exactly, you're right. That's the way I see it. Because I don't know what the deal is with it. In the morning, I, I just don't give up. I'll unplug it. I'll plug it in. I turn it on, off, on, off, on, off. Pretty soon, it just knows I'm not gonna quit and it starts working. You can't operate like that. I mean, it kicked ours in the door. We actually did that day we had the jury come in. I kicked it a couple times.
There was some conversation as far as it, people being searched, people not being searched, people having to go through it, not go through it. So what is the policy currently?
The policy is, if you hold a court card and you can come in here anytime, I'm not to check you. Anybody that can come in that door at any time that's got a card is good to go. I was told the lawyers are regulars, Mike, Chris Juarez, John McDonald, all them. I don't check them. As far as you guys go, you guys all got cards to get in here, correct? So why should I check you? You could bring a gun.
Because I'm suspicious.
Now, I give it to you guys. Takes all this stuff out, but
Every time.
The bottom line is, you don't really have
I empty my pockets every time. When I walk through that metal detector, it does not go off.
Nope.
Find out why, and I take that off.
Well, I'm asking because you brought, I believe you and one of the other commissioners brought it up as far as if we're gonna go, if we're gonna go through with this thirty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars, is it gonna be used for everyone?
I've been in a lot of airports. I don't see anybody walking through the airport.
So he's here. That's why I'm bringing it up. It was brought up. Now we have somebody here.
Hey, I've said it countless times. It was the postal worker that shot up the post office.
Right. And you know what? I get a, if I get an order from Rick, so I take Judge Noble and Rick. That's who I was told. And Ralph, when he was here, those were my bosses.
Okay.
I'll do it. I'll do it. I told to do, I will check. I'll do whatever they ask me to do. I'll check every one of you guys if you want.
Jim, I'm not pointing.
I know, but there's a
I'm just saying, policy is followed.
You know, I mean, everybody coming in here every day. You don't want to stress everybody out by tearing them down every morning. We did a random one once in a while. Did one a while back, and everybody was like expecting it to be an everyday thing, which I thought was cool. Everybody's here is pretty, pretty compliant. They were, they were willing to do it. That says a lot to me about their trustability. I mean, these are, you guys are all county, you know, respected and running the county. I don't think you can need to be checked. But if you want me to, tell Rick, I follow orders.
It was brought up, so.
I empty my pockets. Not take any over.
Tell him how he wants it done.
Over a minute.
I think we have a security meeting. Didn't you, did you send an email out requesting one?
No, we've got one scheduled. It's like quarterly. I don't know what the next one is.
I don't have a problem doing it anyway that my superiors tell me to do it, but that's the way I'm doing it right now, what I'm told to do.
Makes sense.
So.
Well, I agree with Craig on that. I don't want to spend the money unless we're actually gonna use it.
And if it works, we'll use it. I mean, when that's working, that's
I mean, on everybody, not just
Well, that's a whole nother subject there.
You can have, anybody can
I don't have to say. I don't have to say.
We're not asking you to have to say.
No, I'm
We'll make the say.
Right. Right. You talk to my superiors, and I do what I'm told to do. Right, right. You talk to my superiors and I do what I'm told to do.
Basically, it goes back to the Security Council. If the Security Council says everybody, then it's everybody.
I thought that's what we had decided, but.
You don't give them a choice.
We're gonna bring that up in April, so I don't think we should make a decision on this until we have a security meeting in April, myself personally.
As far as that what you're deciding this on, is if we're gonna check everybody or not check everybody? What about the general public? There's five thousand people coming to this building a month. I set that counter back, even during COVID, it was over three thousand, and I worked through that COVID and I had a mask on a lot of times. And I thought I couldn't get COVID because I contact with five thousand people a month, but I'm on December, I got it. So who's, who's to know, you know, as far as that goes? I don't know, that, that's something you guys will have to decide if everybody's to be checked.
Tim, who's got the authority to tell, say, who gets checked and who doesn't?
From my understanding of the hierarchy and the, uh, court order from Lansing was, you have your security committee, and that committee is really an advisory committee to the judge, who ultimately will have the say to what happens. Now, I'll say in my experience here, two years, uh, the courts have been very receptive whenever there's been a suggestion. So if the committee were to come up with something that a judge maybe didn't really wanna do, but if the committee was adamant, he'll probably do it. Now, just to get the, the plug in, Jim mentioned, uh, the compliance level, you know, how high that is among our people. Remember for about a four or five month period, we were doing a daily check-in as well for COVID. And we had over ten thousand check-ins. Uh, even the people in New York who, uh, uh, saw us the Seamless Docs program were really impressed that we had that much compliance, so.
Nightmare, you know, when that was going on, Ron, always he got involved in that, doing all that paper, fighting with people, put their mask on. Now they're coming in with masks on and they don't have. Go figure that. Now, I had some pretty good batteries out there, but nobody got in without one. I will say that, but there was some, a lot of headbutting out there during that time. I'm glad it's gone.
I'd be in favor of a resolution for next week's meeting that says buy it. And that and that the commissioners want total use, full, full use. If, if a judge wants to change that, then it's fine. But as far as I'm concerned, I'm going this, this level. If a judge wants to go less, he can go less. There is a problem, hey buddy, I was here.
I think we, I think we need to have conversation before you put that in writing, but we don't wanna make any waves there.
What's just a small wave?
But why not, why not talk about it first? Wouldn't I have to communicate?
What's the hurry?
At thirty-two thousand dollars.
If there's gonna be a meeting next month, it's not like it's gonna be a long.
I say.
Let's get the feedback from the committee, the judge, and then discuss the.
Now, are you gonna have to go through Daniel now, the new appointed judge?
Whoever the chief judge is.
He was at the last ma- he was at the last meeting.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so can we just put this on the, you guys okay with just keeping this on the committee of the whole? Just so it's not lost?
You got enough to bring it out of committee. Just what I stand with what I said.
Do you guys, does it agree with Commissioner Scott? Or do you guys wanna put it on the committee of the whole and continue to talk about it?
I don't wanna vote on it until we find out what the judge is gonna do.
Great. Commissioner Van?
I decided with Greg, so.
With, pardon me?
I would have sided with Greg.
Craig? Commissioner Rebecca? I'm with Mr. Commissioner Surrick as well, so. Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
But that wasn't a vote.
Discussion items for a draft confidential information policy. Tim?
This policy was, um, uh, revised after we got comments from the attorney, particularly in the definition section. And it, there's just talking about, um, um, you know, what kind of, um, what constitutes confidential information. And the point of these three paragraphs, uh, being, just to boil it down, is that confidential information can come in many forms. It doesn't have to be right in writing. It doesn't have to be, uh, you know, a specific, uh, document. It could be verbal. So when, if you're out talking about something that's, uh, confidential, that, that would put you in violation of this policy. And so it's, um, you know, very, um, fine-tuned definition. The rest of this is what was presented, um, month ago, I think, when we had this originally on there, uh, unchanged. So that's, that's the, the, uh, difference that's in there. The, the attorney did like the language otherwise.
I like that definition in there. I think, I think that, uh, provided quite a bit of strength to this policy.
Well, it's got a resolution.
Amen.
And we are gonna have this reviewed annually. Is that what we had discussed, just as a friendly reminder?
I, I think we should do that. Obviously, also put it into the new employee documents that, that are handed out.
Comments, questions?
So they sign up once as a new employee and then annual review.
Annual. Annual review. And my plan there is, is the, uh, new, um, payroll system comes into play, and we were playing with that today. It's pretty slick. Um, there will be an opportunity for us to put confidential information policy, harassment policy, personnel policy, once we get one, uh, just so that they're on there, and the employee will have to, at that point, say, you know, authenticate that, yes, I have read it and I understand, and all my questions are answered.
Social media policies, is that on?
Social media policy would be one. Anything that has to do with like a personnel action, they could all be on there.
I liked, I, I, I liked what the attorney added to that. Now, who, who, I guess, what happens when it says, uh, it is responsible, uh, violation of the policy may result in disciplinary action. For that, what will happen at that point?
Well, it would depend on where it occurs, as to who actually does the enforcing. If it's an appointed, uh, uh, employee, very likely that ends up being me. If it's an elected office, say if it's in the sheriff's office, it'll be on to the sheriff to conduct the discipline. And in case of a union employee, clearly, we follow the rules that are in the union contract as well when it comes to discipline. But ultimately, it falls to that department head then to follow up.
Okay. So we'll put that on for resolution. Item B, draft building usage policy.
Policy, uh, was drafted after the meeting with the, uh, health program that, that's gonna go on over at the annex. Um, the only thing I wanna bring to your attention in this policy, and it's pretty general, just in terms of using the building, but there is, uh, uh, statement in here about, uh, deposit of fifty dollars. That's just a placeholder number. I, I don't know what number you might be, uh, comfortable with, or even if you're comfortable with any number at all. Uh, but this is intended to take care of, uh, say, a group that comes in and doesn't, uh, you know, put the chairs back and has a bunch of trash that needs to be cleaned up and so on. That's a deposit that'll be used to take care of whatever that problem might have been. Uh, in my experience over the years, we, we've never had a problem with that, when the rooms have always been left in good shape, and we end up, uh, giving the deposit back. But therein lies another question. This is, uh, you know, deposit. Well, do you want there to be a fee? So no matter what, you know, there's, there's a fee for using that room. We've hadn't had that conversation, so that's, that's something to, uh, discuss here. Now, I've also developed a form, uh, be a companion to this, that we would put on our webpage, so make it very easy for people to, uh, schedule a room if they're outside of the county government. Um, of course, then we would check with the master calendar to make sure it's available. Uh, but the idea here is if we're gonna do this, we'll make it as convenient as we can to implement for anybody who would wanna room.
Uh, this, this is not this is, uh, well, and when you look at that request form, and it, it says what rooms are available here. So, you know, it's, it's more than that. Um, the only thing with the fifty dollar number, when we talk about the hall at the Deer Park, that's much larger and can be used for many other things than what we're, we're talking here. I mean, parties can have, happen there, you know? And has. It's been rented out for many, many, uh, receptions and all kinds of things. It is a hall. It is not a meeting room. So to say fifty dollars, I mean, that's, that's minimal.
In that case, and I vaguely remember in our fee resolution, there were fees in there already established for that. So rather than having that on this form, just maybe a statement that says contact the Deer Park, you know, to, to schedule, and then follow that fee schedule, rather than trying to keep it.
We started at fifty up there because we just wanted to see if we could get some groups coming in, because we weren't. For years, they did. Well, but the biggest, the biggest problem up there is the, the, the hall has no heat. So we don't rent it during the winter, and it's, you know, even in spring and fall, it's kinda cold, you know, to have an event, so. As we, fundraise and things like that, maybe down the road we'll get heated or something, but just, just fifty dollars may be a little shy on a, on a secure deposit. They won't buy a table if they break a table.
You're talking about up there at the Deer Park?
Yeah.
So what do they charge now?
I think we're, I think we're still at fifty, just to get somebody coming in.
I don't think it was.
Wasn't even that?
I don't think it was raised from that.
Yeah, I don't think it was raised from that. That's even, yeah. So, and that's just rent. That's not just, that's not, uh, just deposit, so.
I was surprised to see the, when I read this, before last week, I was surprised to see that fifty dollars in there. Who had just decided on the fifty?
Just a placeholder. That's all it is.
Okay.
It's nothing.
I don't, so, when, when I read through it, it does say fifty dollars deposit, but I didn't see where and I probably missed it, where that fifty dollars, if the room is left in good condition, I didn't see where that fifty dollars is gonna be returned. Did I miss that? I know it says deposit everywhere, but I didn't see anywhere where it said.
Is it in the guidelines to use then? Time I'm going next here.
I also see on their secret campground RV park, there's nothing. I mean, we rent campsites out there, but we don't have any facilities to really rent out.
No, we, we don't allow parties in our shower halls.
That'd be the only place you get home.
Um, number three on the guidelines, uh, room use fees are applied as a guarantee that the room will be left in a clean and tidy condition and also returned in the state it was found. Okay, it does not say anything about refund.
I didn't see it anywhere.
Does say additional charges if you damage.
I did read that. So I guess who's gonna handle this? Say, you know, the, the rental does pick up and.
I don't have a problem dropping the fifty, except, you know, I just, the Deer Park, the, to be set aside. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see a problem half the rent this room or the even the annex building or something like that to a, a fee, I mean. We're going, it doesn't mean that just, just because you fill out an application, you get the room. We can leave it to the administrator to, to allow who he, he thinks should be able to use it.
Well, if we have this policy, it's
Free game.
Yeah, it's, it, it's gonna be tough to tell somebody yes and somebody else no.
That's why we're letting you.
But as far as the Deer Park, Deer Park, they should come right off.
I personally don't.
Anybody with fifty bucks. And you know, you're gonna say no.
Why could they not? It's fifty, uh, why not?
Let me just tell you.
I wanna be able to say yes or no.
Let me tell you a quick story about Pandora's Box. There was a, uh, group in, uh, city that was located in the county where I used to work. I won't call them out here. Um, they had a, a, a program where people could come in and clean up the park. And if you came in and cleaned up the park, you come to the next city council meeting, they present you with a nice plaque. Thank you for what you've done. Great. And they had a group did that, did a great job cleaning up the park. They came in, got their picture. Picture was put in the paper. And letters come in the next week saying, you do realize that this is a white supremacist group, right? That's potentially the Pandora's Box that is opened up by letting these rooms in that way. We don't have a basis to say to that group, you can't meet.
Yeah, we talked about that, about flying special flags out front. That if you didn't fly a, any flag, then you can't, we probably won't see a swastika blown out there.
Right, so both, just like going to this with your eyes wide open, that that's, that's there. That's remote of, uh, a chance of that happening is it's possible. You could have a group like that, and you would really have no choice but to say, yeah, give us your fifty dollars. You wanna rent the boardroom for a day or two hours or whatever it is.
Then can we limit it to county business or?
You can. You can limit it to public agencies only. Okay, if you wanna open that up to nonprofits, but I don't think we close the door then on.
The guys can't seem to.
Why do we wanna limit it? I don't understand.
Well, it's like he says, you are opening, uh, opening a door, you know?
They're gonna rent a room for a couple hours. What about?
Three business hours only.
Attorneys doing depositions and.
That's typically county business, so you wouldn't charge for that. This is a public agency, let's say, um, say Michigan Works wants to do, uh, a workshop, and they don't have room. They've got a beautiful building, far better than what we have, but let's just say they wanted to do that fight. Well, the, the hospital wanting to do their training is a good example. They're not a county agency, but they are sort of a public agency that you could say, okay, we do that. Then I'm thinking about the hospital, like they're a nonprofit, right?
I guess, do you guys think that we need to charge fifty dollars? How are you guys, let's start there. What, what do you think about the fifty dollars? Commissioner Van?
I, I would, I would charge the fifty dollars just to holding. If they leave the room as is, send the fifty dollars back.
Okay.
Um, during business hours only, of course, cause you've gotta pay security staff. You have them coming in after hours.
But if they wanna use the annex building?
If the annex building's different, you know, as far as that goes. Security down there.
Right.
But again, the same thing, you know? If they pay the fifty dollars to.
We can't really let someone use that building for free for charging people rent in the building right now.
Not everybody, that's fair. Go ahead.
I, I agree, we should be charged with something.
So do you agree?
Fundable or non-refundable?
Non-refundable.
Non-refundable.
Commissioner Scott?
Building expenses.
Not very bad. No, no, I. Would we say that be anybody outside of the county government? Like, say, the nonprofit hospital? Like that? I don't think that'd be too bad. I don't think we'd take too much from their nonprofit, fifty bucks.
Commissioner Newbecker?
Charge me more.
Commissioner Newbecker brings up a great point about the annex. We are charging people rent, utilize that building. So I think if that building's gonna be utilized, then we should as well, to somebody that wants to utilize it. And I don't, fifty dollars is a no, a small amount of money for using the conference room over there for God's sake. I mean, you know.
So we're looking at taking out the Deer Park, taking out the secret campground RV park, correct? So all we have left on there is the annex building, the Board of Commissioners room, and the com- what conference room are you?
Those two.
Oh, this room and then, I'm sorry, okay. So I mean, you're not looking at charging, are you, are you guys talking about just charging fifty bucks for the annex building or fifty bucks for those three?
Annex.
I'm asking.
So I'm thinking the annex.
Well.
Commissioner Scott?
How many non, do you take care of the, the use of this room? Okay, how many non-municipal groups use this room?
Nobody.
Nobody.
Do you guys even still use it?
Oh, yeah.
You guys.
Health.
DHHS, no.
Oh.
Department of Health and Human Services. We still can't meet in there.
But that's the, that's the only, besides court stop, like attorneys and whatever, that's the only other.
Health departments.
Yeah.
Municipal is tax-funded, taxpayer-funded, right?
State of Michigan, Department of Health and Human Services. She said.
I said Health Department.
Well, either one, they're tax-supported. So they're a municipal entity.
State of Michigan.
Yeah, so.
Outside of that, no.
Outside of that, no. So can we write anybody outside of that on for this, these rooms?
We don't lease them now, so I mean, we just leave them for public purpose. That's it.
Well, then I wouldn't, then let's not, I, I'd be in favor of not leasing out this room or those two rooms or any space, any space in the county building. Proper to an outside of a municipality through. And then the annex building, well, if a nonprofit wants to use for training or something like that, then charge them a non-refundable fifty bucks.
I'd agree with that.
Non-refundable. We don't refund them.
I think that'd be easier versus all the back.
Yeah, because my thought is, who's taking the money, who's sending it?
Yeah, you gotta send money back and all that.
Yeah, yeah.
No. Another thing to your list.
Yes.
Another task.
Especially if you're refunding, if you're getting in, you refund it all the time.
It's too much paper.
And you're burning up employee time.
Yes.
For nothing.
Yeah, I see this.
Do you see just taking fifty dollars being an issue?
No, that, no, I think that would be.
You can take fifty bucks.
I can take anybody's fifty bucks.
Per day or fifty dollars per?
I'd say per day.
Per use.
Yeah.
I would say per use because they may want it for three days.
Well, I, yeah, per day then.
Within business hours over there, right?
Or.
Well, I think.
No, I don't think that needs to be.
I think evenings.
They don't have business hours, they're twenty-four hours because dispatches.
And you don't need security.
So we just need to have the building unlocked and.
Yes.
Have to arrange for that internally here.
Looking at me for that too? Okay, are we good?
I haven't, and we're going to, it comes down to them where it's only the annex now.
Fifty dollars non-refundable.
Per day.
And Tom's getting set up over there for. The tele video, right? So good, okay, we're good. Uh, draft business travel and reimbursement policy.
Okay, you've got the old policy there. Let's ignore that. Oh, the reason this came about, we are starting to open up now and I've had actually two. Uh, department heads come to me and ask about travel overnight, not so much overnight, but the mileage rates and meal reimbursements, which this policy intends to get at. Now, just to, um, give me just a second here to jot down that last one. And just to quickly walk you through it, um, in the local travel section, you see a link in there to the IRS mileage rate. What this policy does is allows that rate to float with whatever the IRS says is okay. Right now it's fifty-eight and a half cents. The prior policy, um, I believe is at fifty cents and it would take an act of the board to change that. This eliminates the need for you to act every time the IRS makes an adjustment. Now, the gas prices stay where they are. I fully expect there'll be an adjustment probably around July. They'll probably adjust it upwards. That's what they did back in, uh. Four eight or nine when the gas prices were so high. And then they took it back down as gas prices fell. So. This will alleviate the need to bring a resolution every time that happens. It just simply is built into the policy that way. Computing of the mileage would be the shortest route available and with our phones these days and with, uh, uh, Google Maps, I mean, you can figure that out even before you leave, but the shortest route is, and that's what we end up reimbursing. Uh, this policy does say that under no condition will we reimburse for parking violation or other moving violation tickets. Those are all yours as an employee. Uh, the meal allowance, and this is one where I really think, um, this is very advantageous. The, um, meal and incidental expense rate is posted just like the IRS rate is for mileage. Uh, at the general service administration webpage, this is, um, uh, very dynamic. And then if we have an employee that needs to go to. Uh, let's just pick New York, not that that's ever going to happen, but the price of a meal in New York is way different than it is in West Branch. So what they've done is gone through and determined what that reimbursement rate would be for that city and set that limit. After that, there's, there's no receipt required or anything. So your employee doesn't have to worry about keeping all the receipts from all the meals and all the incidentals. That rate is established. That's what we accept. Anything above that is on you, uh, as the employee. The second part of this section talks about people who travel for less than a day. Well, the first one is for the full day, you'd be eligible for all three meals. If you leave before eight AM, you return after six PM. All meals will be covered, but you can see the breakdowns. If you leave after eight, but you're home after six, well, then lunch and dinner, but breakfast is not going to be allowed under that circumstance. All the way down to if you leave before eight and you're back before noon, you're, you've got the breakfast allowance, that's it. If you leave, uh, before eight and you're back, um, I'm sorry, if you leave after eight and you're back before noon, you're not eligible for anything. You don't fall into any of this criteria. Uh, so that's spelled out. Now, if, uh, you're, is, uh, traveling for the county, you're going to a conference and that conference provides meals. You don't get extra reimbursement for that. You're expected as part of the registration for the conference, uh, to take the meal that they have. If you want to go and do something else, it's completely on you. Uh, as far as the reimbursements are concerned, there is a voucher that I believe I included here as an example. Uh, that would have you itemize what those expenses were. If you were traveling and you traveled a hundred fifty miles, it's set up so that you type in your hundred fifty miles, it will automatically calculate what that total is for you. Uh, any supporting receipts outside of what we've already talked about would have to be attached each day expensed, um, separately as noted. So that by the time this gets submitted for payment, everything is in line. It's all there. It's very easy then to have it entered into the system for final approval. Uh, on the overnight travel, um, not a lot of, um, requirements here, uh, outside of, uh, making sure that you're authorized by your department head on the overnight travel. This isn't something that anybody can just pick up and do. Where I are expecting our employees or anybody traveling on county business to incur expenses that, as we're quoting, you're a prudent person would exercise in traveling on personal business. This, you're not doing anything extravagant. You're not staying at the most expensive hotels and so on. That, um. Uh, second website I mentioned also gives us caps on hotel rates as well, so that'll help lease that. Uh, but we do say as well, though, if you're staying for a conference and there's a conference rate that's acceptable, whatever that is, and they usually, uh, in that case set aside a bank of rooms, uh, at a reduced rate. Then a series of, um, guidelines for business travel. Uh, one point that is made here is that it is okay if you're traveling on county business. If you want to stay at a location longer, you can do that, but it's on your dime. Now, you would think you wouldn't have to say that. But I can tell you.
I'd hold on that.
I can tell you an experience where, um, uh, we had, um. Husband and wife, we stayed over a few extra nights and submitted all the bills. And when I asked about that, they said, well, it's, it's just a given that that's okay. I don't know in what world that's so hard. So we're spelling it out right here in the policy. It's not okay, but you can, but it's going to be on your dime. Uh, use of, uh, county owned vehicles, that's in here. This kind of nice set to the conversation we had last Friday, that if we do end up with a pool vehicle, this will be very important, um, you know, to set up the rules for use. And then there are other miscellaneous, uh, reimbursements, uh, that are allowed and, and not allowed and talking about that in the rest of this policy. So I won't belabor each one of those. So that is the nickel tour of this policy. And as I said, things are starting to open back up. Um, they've had two inquiries here just in the last few weeks about this.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Newbaker? Commissioner.
Transport officers, law enforcement officers, prisoners, south, north, east, west.
That, there's actually a, a line in here that talks about if you're, you're traveling for that purpose, law enforcement in particular, or prosecutor, if they have a expert witness that they need to deal with. These won't necessarily apply. You've got a job, you've got to get done. So we don't want the policy to prohibit. Transport of inmates, whatever that might be. Those are few and far between, but I think it's important that they're called out and, you know, recognized for what they are. They had, uh, we were just talking about having to go down, somebody going to Tennessee to pick up an inmate, bring them back in projects like that. Um, there are tasks like that. This wouldn't apply.
Commissioner.
I'm good.
The last, in the enforcement, uh. Uh, you're authorized, we're authorizing you to reject any expenditure inconsistent, inconsistent with provisions, uh. I guess I'm, uh, on the discipline side, uh, the abuse side, because there's, there's, there's way. This opens up many opportunities to, to abuse the system. So.
Anything that you're asking to be reimbursed for has to be reported on that voucher. So it's going to be very easy to go to that item and test. Is this something that's consistent with the policy or not? Mileage is going to take care of itself. If you travel from point A to point B, we can look it up. You have a, an expense on there for a hotel, uh, and it looks high, we will go to that webpage and we will check to see what that limit is. If you have a number on here that's too high, we'll cross out your number and put the right number on it. Where we run into this is, um, when people go out and they try to justify something as sort of an incidental expense. That's what's really nice about having to call that out because it's going to be very easy then to go to that expense and then determine if it is legitimate or not. Um, these are pretty cotton dry. Uh, I really like the idea of going to those other websites pages that set those limits. Because there it is. If we have a voucher turned in for alcohol, we're going to reject that. We're going to take it right off the list. Uh, but again, it's going to be called out. We're going to see it. It goes off.
They have to turn in all their vouchers, correct?
Right, beyond, uh, the, say the lunch allowance. So, and I don't know what to say, it's thirteen dollars. Um, if you're going to, uh, do anything above that, you're going to need to have a receipt. Otherwise, we're saying thirteen, we recognize that.
That's good. Policies on parking or traffic violations, is there, is there something where they have to report? If they have a traffic violation someplace? Do we do that in any, any of our policies if they use a county vehicle? Because I know when I was, worked for Waste Management, if I had a driver that. Got a ticket in a, in a truck, in a company truck, he was, he was to tell us. If he did not, this play action.
We could certainly put that in that section D. If you get a parking or traffic violation, you must report it.
But that's only if they're in.
So it's going to be law enforcement's riding, driving vehicles. I mean, we got, well, we just approved a couple of trucks for the building department. I don't want those guys getting tickets and then, you know, from anybody.
The ticket's issued to you though, right? So if I'm speeding.
You're driving my vehicle.
If it's a parking ticket and I've gotten one and I didn't deserve it and it was taken.
I got one too and I didn't.
They write down the license plate number and that's what it's tied to. So if that were to happen. And it wasn't paid and somebody gets some mail one day and gosh, there's a parking violation. Okay, who had the car that day? Be pretty easy to figure out. We'll walk that ticket right over there.
Well, it's just like reporting an accident, you know, I think we should, if it's not this policy, but we, we should. Take a look at that later on. Maybe we should have a, a use of, uh, use of county owned vehicle policy. Over above compensation.
I, I see what he's going with this. I mean, if they, if they back into somebody and they put a small dent in the car and they don't report it. And it doesn't get noticed until a week later, how do we know who did it? You know, who was driving the vehicle when it happened?
When you get that record company that calls you and says, hey, what was the number of that truck that I'd be pulled out? They paid me with a card.
So are you?
Think that does that?
Are you guys good with this draft business travel?
Yeah, I don't have a problem. I like it.
Hey, we'll have that on for a resolution. Item D, surplus property auction.
Okay, this is a product, one of the first projects that Mary did for us. Um, we have come across a web, uh, based. A service, uh, called Public Surplus that will handle our surplus properties for auction. Here's some neat things about it. First of all, there are over six thousand public agencies already registered across the country that use this. There is about a three and a half page. Item on your, on your iPads of all the Michigan, uh, agencies that use this. You'll see it is kind of heavy toward the schools, but you'll see a lot of cities and townships who are using that as well. They advertise over seven million hits per day on their page. That doesn't mean if we have a worn out sheriff vehicle that we're going to get seven million views on that. We probably won't. But it's there, people know it's there. And if they're looking for a car, for instance, um, there's a better chance that our, our car will be seen. Um, it's designed obviously specifically for governments. We get, uh, we'll get reports back from this company about anything that's sold so that we can make sure that it's documented. Properly, not only for our asset management, but also for auditing purposes to make sure that we've complied with all of the various requirements that we comply with. There is no startup or installation cost. There's no cost to us actually at all. Their fees will actually be assessed at the other end of the auction. So if I bid on something, I win it. There's a fee that the company charges.
Fires premium.
Yeah, so that's, um, taken care of. So we're not out of pocket anything upfront. The, um. Ability for us to establish a minimum bid is also in place. So if we do have a car or any other property, but car is easy one to. To put out there and we want a minimum bid on that car or five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, we can set that minimum. Uh, and then any bid obviously coming in, you know, but we won't cap anybody's bid. You can pay us as much as you want. Uh, there's no fixed period either. So as items become available, we can put them on this page and put them out for that auction immediately. We don't have to wait for, you know, thirty days or anything along those lines. Um, this for me is probably about the, the most advantageous piece that I read about this because I know that there have been a couple of cars across the street. For at least a year and it's just been a matter of how are we going to organize our auction? Uh, we can set up, uh, in our advertising, if we wanted to be able, or if people wanted to view a car or another piece of property. Or they can set an appointment to do that, or we could set a time, Friday at three o'clock, we're going to walk people through these cars. We can put it right on there. So that, that's also available to us. Uh, it for us is probably as hands-free management as we can get. And as I said, it's, um, perpetual. I mean, as things come up and we don't get to sell the postage meter, I understand that, but if that piece of equipment. Were needing to be stored someplace and we never wanted to see it again, it goes out for auction immediately.
Ex or.
A good idea, yeah. Thousand dollar minimum bid.
Oh, you might be surprised. You get transit involved with this too?
We sure could. We sure could. So anybody affiliated with the county, we could, we could do that. If we wanted to team up even with the city, we could do that.
Yeah. It would be a better.
Think this is a no brainer, so.
Or even. Can you say that?
Yeah.
This is going to open up so much storage.
That's hope.
Really will. Okay, questions? Comments? Okay. Onto item E or V ordinance. Come on up, guys. Is that going to be a resolution?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. Uh, back a couple of weeks ago, I had all the police agencies, including DNR tabletop. Our old, our old ordinance and these are the changes that we all came up with. Um, a lot of these are, are from our old ordinance. We've just applied them here, but. We did add some things. We had, we added some safety measures, um, that wasn't in there. We increased the fines. We, uh, we, it, it's open for debate. We, we opened up the, the speed to twenty-five. And the reason why we did that particular thing is to kind of correspond with Ross Common because that's what they're at. They're at twenty-five. So we figured. Our trail system, you know, connect, it's less confusing for the individuals that's passing through. Um, you can see that, that, that there's several different safety measures that's been added. And what we did is we took, we took ours. Old ordinance and we took Ross Commons ordinance and we kind of, we kind of put them together. Just so it, it supersedes each other basically. And one thing we did do, we, we tweaked the hours. We went from five AM, which. We went from five AM, which accommodates the deer hunters. So they can get in and out of the trails, you know, and get to their blinds. But we did, we, we cut it off at eleven PM. Basically, that gives, gives us a reason to stop if they're out there after eleven. And not only that, these roads go right near houses and, and that way we can shut them down so people can, can rest and not have to listen to these things all night long. That's basically why we did that, just to kind of accommodate people. The way it was with the sunrise, the sunset, it's kind of confusing because that changes every day.
Absolutely.
So I, I like what you said. Commissioner Scott, about eleven o'clock, that, that kind of hit home. I, I thought that was a good round number. So, so we ran with that. And, and the whole, the, our law enforcement committee per se, we, we all agreed on this. I mean, it would, it, it, it makes sense to all of us. So.
Questions?
We have the old one sitting on our iPads here. You, you, do you have any exclusions in yours? Other, the M roads and the I roads, we already know.
Yeah, you know, I did, I, I read a, a letter that came in. I, I think it's a good idea to add, to add up in there, West Branch Business Loop. I think we should put that.
Isn't that, isn't that because it's a business loop, isn't that an M road?
Yeah, well, not really, it isn't, but. But there's a. State road. Yeah, there, there's so much traffic there and everything. They don't need to go out there.
Oh, I agree. I totally agree, but.
But I, I think.
But I thought it was, I, I thought that was considered them road when it's a loop.
Yeah, it's.
I don't know.
I seventy-five business loop.
I know on the M fifty-five portion it is, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I would say it's considered an M road business loop. I said.
Now, so let me go a step further then. Do you know where I live?
Yep.
Is that an M road? There's not an M road sign out there.
It's not an M road anymore.
Right.
It isn't. It used to be, but it's not now.
It, the M road.
It stops at I seventy-five.
Right.
So you're not, that's not an M road.
Sorry.
That, no, that's fine. That's fine.
But there's a lot of trails, you know, there's a lot of trails up past.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah.
But you, this, this doesn't do anything to the trails. Okay, they can operate down the trails.
Yeah, they can.
Five in the morning.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that. What if they enter one of our roads?
Our roadways.
Yeah.
Our roadways, yeah. And, and it.
Now, I don't know if you heard, we talked, bringing the report back from the road commission, they had just assumed they stay on the.
Yeah, I just.
Because they.
I heard you talk. A while ago, yeah. I heard you talk.
That's their concern.
Yeah.
Yeah. The thing is with me is if you take a side-by-side that's six, seven feet wide, that you, you gotta go into the other lane to pass them anyway, even if they're on the shoulder, you know, I. And if a car is coming the other way, something's going to go, you know, because there's just not enough road left, you know.
Well, nowadays, a lot of your UTVs are licensed for the road.
The UTV?
Has this been sent to our legal team to make sure that this is in a alliance with the state? I, I'd like this RV a hundred percent, but we need to make sure that this is also in alliance with the state or the ordinance.
Yeah, we're still getting used to having that tool available.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just in case we.
Yeah, it's, it's basically, it's a draft and it's open for discussion.
Questions, Commissioner Rick?
Um, just looking at two things where it spells out, you know, the, the M roads and then also the city of West Branch and Rose City. Any, yes, comments on Mills Township? Going through there.
Rose City is open, isn't it?
Yes.
On any side road, I, I think we should just.
They have a route down.
They have a route.
They have a landmark draw.
Same little city of West Branch, same landmark road.
Well, maybe, maybe we should just not say you can't operate within the city, but leave a disclaimers to the cities and to how they want to lay it out.
What does Mills Township do?
There's real, there's no trail system there at all, really. There's not. Well, I see a lot of violations. And everything else. Usually it's when I'm not, it's usually not when, when I'm in my personal car.
But the township, don't they, they don't mind them operating on.
Well, if, if you, if you.
According to the rules.
Yeah, they.
Basically, if we get a, if we get a complaint in an area, we work it. We're.
Right.
I mean, that's what we do.
Well, the complaint's going to be a robbery.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Not the, not the guy, not the retired guy that lives down there and wants to drive up to South Branch.
Yeah.
Because a lot of them do that. They, they take their time and they go up. That's not the complaint.
No, no, there's a lot of.
They're going to follow the rules.
A lot of folks will leave Skidway Lake area and, and drive up to Rose City, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Roads and.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And even from Aranac all the way through. It's unbelievable how far they go.
And then it says a, a crash helmet can also protective eyewear. Did they have to have the protective eyewear if they have a windshield on?
No, and basically that, that will supersede the, that will follow the state law, whatever that is.
Yeah.
Did Mills Township see this? Did they? I didn't know they, they never said anything in the meetings. I wonder if they had any input on it, just because that, there, there is a lot of RVs over there.
Yeah.
I know, I know. I, I just, I don't recall. I'm the one that goes to meetings.
We've never had feedback. I mean, we had it out there for months.
I agree.
No feedback, running it. And I even mentioned that down there, so.
My four townships gave me feedback and I brought back to the board, you know, and I talked to them, but but we put it out there. It's been in the news.
I was with you at the meetings.
Yeah, you've been there. And so, you know, they've had more than opportunity. We went to the road commission, asked them what their input would be, you know. So.
So we're going to send it to our legal team?
I do that. And this, because this is an ordinance would require, I remember going through this last time, require a public hearing. So if there are no substantial changes from the attorneys, are you comfortable with us just going ahead and setting this up for a hearing at one of your regular meetings?
Absolutely.
Yeah, will you forward if there are changes? Because I think and there's going to be some, can you?
I'll definitely forward. Whatever they send us, I'll forward that to you. But assuming it's not significant, we'll just go through with the notice and, you know, whatever meeting that would probably be in April, notice it up for them.
See what it's coming.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Good.
You bet.
Next, we have the US Deputy Sheriff's Association Grant.
You guys go to that? That's pretty cut and dry, that, that grant.
Did you want to explain it briefly?
Like, yeah.
Quickly?
We got five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I see it. Congratulations.
Let's accept it and spend it.
Deputy Better applied for this, uh, this United States Deputy Sheriff Association Grant. Uh, and we were awarded five thousand dollars and that is to be used for guns, ammo, or our vest. So.
Those three things only?
Yes.
Yeah.
What else?
You can use it on anything that's use of force related.
Use of force, okay.
So we could look at tasers.
Okay, I didn't know that.
There's not specifics to it, but it's recommended by the association of these areas. A lot of the other grants don't allow the way to expect firearms ammunition tasers.
What, what period time do you have to spend this?
It's our money. We actually already spent on the purchase of four primary handguns. They were previously ordered, so we'll use some of this money to cover those four handgun purchases. So we'll have about, let's say, thirty-four hundred dollars left of the grant after it's accepted and applied to the bill that's coming through hand guns. And then spend on something else.
Good.
So you've already gotten a check, right? I mean, I remember you saying, so what you'll, what you'll see is on the next budget adjustment resolution that comes in April, you'll see that revenue come in and we'll see, well, you'll see it. It'll.
It's a budget.
This is really cool because so many of the grants require you to spend the money first and then some.
Right, exactly.
So this is really nice that it's.
Money upfront. Just like that.
Yeah.
The only thing they ask for is pictures of what we spend the money on.
Right.
We decide where the other money is going. It's tasers and we put that with the four handguns, take a picture and send it to the association.
Perfect.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, I just wanted to say, you know, the conversation was about the grants was letting us know that you were applying.
Yeah.
And we're waiting. I put that in my reports to all my townships this month.
Okay.
And they were, the public was very impressed that, that you guys are asking for that money. I just, I just left it as, we're hoping for good news.
Yes, we are.
So it doesn't matter if, if, if it fails for whatever reason, we're trying. And that's money that taxpayers aren't paying for, not right here locally at least.
Yeah.
Quite a sum of money.
Anytime you guys do that, let us know.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Let us know. Next, we have the Economic Development Corporation appointment.
Yep, this is a request from the EDC to reappoint Mr. Pereira to, this is a six-year term, so it'll be through December thirty-first of twenty-seven.
That's a long term.
Yeah. There aren't too many of those.
Wow, yeah, Mr. He's the one my press guy superintendent.
Yeah.
Obviously, he must want to continue, so. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
Asamo Valley Community Mental Health Authority Board appointment, and I think I seen that's Mr. Evans?
Yes, and same thing. This is not a six-year term, but I believe a four-year term in this case, and he is agreed to be reappointed if you were so inclined.
Did he used to come here as hell?
Oh, yeah, yeah. He used to come to all the meetings, yeah.
Yeah, he comes, he's in our.
He's on nine-one-one still, isn't he?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is he, he's okay?
Don't come back and see.
I jail incarceration data sharing agreement.
Okay, and this is also fairly routine grant. This is data that our corrections facilities required to share with the state anyway. The states ask for contracts from each of the counties and their jails to say that they are in fact going to provide this data and it's just that, there's no money involved. Just us agreeing that we're going to do what we're supposed to do.
So, so, yeah.
What brought this about?
Not sure. Got an email from the state that said, here's a contract we'd like you to sign. And they actually had something that said, by the way, after the contract is signed, we might change the language. And we did have our legal team already get ahold of them saying that's not okay if there's going to be any changes that you need to go through. You know, this process of having both parties agree before you do that. And they said, okay. So hopefully that will never happen. We don't want to test that.
Is there an end date to this agreement?
No.
I don't think so.
Seeing.
No.
Yeah.
This DSA is effective, signed by both parties unless terminated under section twenty-two, DSA will be ongoing. Reviewed on an annual basis, confirm that no revisions are necessary.
Questions?
For years.
Yeah, I thought we were already doing this.
You are doing it.
This is something the state is wanting to update it probably, who knows?
Okay. Our project.
You have the results of the scoring. This is the cumulative scoring, not, not individual. You see a number of projects, you know, tied with their number. What I just wanted to point out to you is those six or so projects in pink were obviously the highest scoring projects. If you were so inclined, you want to fund those projects, you have the funding already here to do that. If you wanted to move forward on any of them at any point. The rest of the projects, you know, some of those, if we were going to do sheriff's office structural repairs, for instance, it'd probably be a good idea to get some kind of an estimate as to what we're talking about before that project was approved. So it'd be true with any project, but then unknown number. Now, project number twelve, the one that says childcare. As I recall the conversation, it wasn't necessarily a fixed amount that you, you were looking at, just that maybe if there were, say, the EDC was to really take this up as a project that you'd want to set aside money to participate in that. So you can plug in a number on that one. It's not as critical as, say, a construction project where we need to know the number. The number for the vehicle GPS, the ten thousand number, I did look at a couple of options that were out there. The base cost, if you will, the cost for the, the software to get the headquarters situated was anywhere from, I saw over about seven hundred and fifty dollars to a high of about twenty-five hundred. And then there was a fee per vehicle that you would, you know, tack a monitor on. And those were ranging generally from about fifty dollars to about a hundred and fifty dollars. So, I mean, just depending on what program we went with. So I did just a quick count of the vehicles that we have in our fleet. Ten thousand would cover it under the scenarios I saw. So I'm pretty comfortable with that number if we wanted to receive with that. Now, we did talk about expanding that to other agencies, you know, one comes to mind is maybe the road commission or somebody like that. We could allow them to buy in. So we have the, the main reporting software and whatever that's monitoring all this. We have that already. So maybe you want to see if you want to buy in at sixty-five dollars per monitor, whatever that is, you could do that. And then they could, if they didn't want to have all their vehicles on the system, they wouldn't have to. But that way you're not out, out of pocket anything more and it can be sort of a fluid thing. So if another agency comes along later and they want to add on, well, here's the fee.
Didn't we get an email, the under sheriff put together on a cost that was combined? Wasn't that body cameras and GP, uh, GPS or did I misread that?
So, something different, body cameras and in-car cameras. That's a different system. Now, I don't know if, there isn't a GPS component to that, those two.
There should be for that cost.
Should be.
They just throw it in for free.
That's a five-year contract to.
Yeah, I seen that.
Did any of these ones that you've got here, Tim, did they have camera packages in there at all?
I didn't see any reference to cameras at all. This was just the monitoring the vehicle.
And would that be something that obviously would be secure and could nine-one-one utilize it?
Yeah, and I say that, you know, Tom might be behind the camera there saying, I don't know. But my understanding is it could be, we could locate it anywhere we wanted to. That would seem to be illogical, particularly when we're dealing with first responders. That would be the logical place to put it. But it's pretty mobile. We could put it anywhere we wanted.
I personally would like to do the, I, I think it looks like we all agree on definitely the first three or the first four all the way up to animal control vehicle. Will that cost still be appropriate for the annex building repairs? Are we going to have to?
I would suggest that we budget one fifty for it to account for any increase in costs, but just remind you, this is pretty much from the ceiling up where this work is. This doesn't include, you know, patching holes in walls or carpeting or anything like that. This is just the ceiling up. And so if we were going to talk about, you know, rearranging offices or something like that, that's, that's a different cost. All right.
We got Jack Marcelon that gave you a, a bid, correct?
Right.
So shouldn't we put that out for bid?
It's, uh, say stale enough bid that I think that would be appropriate. Yes.
Put it out for bid.
To put it out for bid.
You kind of lost me there with the word stale.
In the price of building materials, it's going to be in the hundred and fifty plus.
I mean, by, by looking at these numbers, do you guys agree? I mean, we definitely agreed, I thought, on the annex building repairs, we got to do something there. You know, we have renters in there, the vehicle GPS and the equalization planning and zoning vehicle. I mean, he definitely is in need of that, along with the animal control vehicle.
Was the animal control vehicle one of the USDA?
It is one of the.
So, I mean, we, it is, see, you allocate the funding now. You're not just writing a check right now. So we'd want to wait for that result to come back before we actually wrote the check.
Do you guys disagree with that for right now?
Well, as a matter of fact, as far as the equalization plan, if if there's a third opportunity that Brian Stein's got right now, is we ought to include right now.
The third vehicle?
If there is a third one being builder or something like that, along to two that he's got. I mean, that's the kind of vehicle we need, so just match it and get it coming.
Those are pickups, right?
Why would we need a pickup?
I think Andy was looking more like an SUV so they could haul around their survey equipment if they need to do that.
Weather related.
Truck would do it too, I guess.
Put a cap on it.
Put a cap on it, yeah. Lit on the back.
Your towel cover.
Talking four doors. Just look in my four doors, you know that I don't carry people in the back.
I mean, do you guys disagree with that? I, I think those first four, we, we're all in pretty much agreement that them are a necessity. I mean, do you guys disagree with that? I I think those first four, we are all in pretty much agreement that them are a necessity.
Mm-hmm. Well, yeah, if if Randy does have a different, but you know, we're, yeah, if Randy has a different idea, then maybe we take a look at that.
Well, what I would suggest, if you want to commit to it and write a resolution up for Thursday that commits to it, but that does not waive the bidding process or anything else in our purchasing policy, so we have Randy and probably Ryan, since they will both be the primary users, come in with a proposal, and then you approve that.
Okay, are you guys okay putting that on for Thursday?
Yes.
Yes.
So we can knock four things off the list. Yes, Commissioner Man?
Well, looking at it, I say, well, looking down the list, um, I'd personally be in favor for the top six, but um, Randy had a good talk on the equalization G I S upgrades, and we know we need the cameras over in the correctional facility.
I just wanted to take it slow.
I will. I mean, there's a couple, you know, you you can say that you can use the um, commissary money for the digital cameras, but there's also, you know, you're gonna end up needing another van, and you you can't just totally burn up that um, burn up everything. I don't know how much is in the commissary right at the present, but.
Yeah, I've got the list right by my desk.
By your desk. Well, plus we were talking about the full body scanner, that was a hundred and some odd thousand dollars there, you know, so I'm sure that if you look at cameras, transport vehicle, the full body scanner, that's gonna cost way more than what's in the commissary. So something's gotta give someplace.
Right.
In that regard of.
That's what I'm saying, if.
All three of those.
If we, you know, you even if they come back, if Lieutenant come back and said, okay, you know, maybe the commissary can pay for half of that stuff and ARPA pay for the other half, well, we might be better off taking care of the digital cameras and then tell them go ahead with the commissary and purchase all the equipment you want if it's there.
Right, I mean, I think those things are gonna deserve some more conversation. I I definitely, again, I think those top four is where I'm at. I I still want to do a little bit more research on seventy-five grand for that G I S upgrade and and the cameras, we may get monies down from the state yet, I I. Them are the four that I'm concrete on. I I don't want to jump in too deep, but that's my opinion. Commissioner Scott?
Well, as far as cameras go, we we just, we're talking unknowns right at this moment. We don't know how much is in the commissary to to share costs. I don't see any, I don't see any project coming in a hundred percent. I I see a a shared cost. Uh, but we don't have those numbers in front of us, and unless I saw them days ahead of time of a vote. You know, that's the only thing I'd have, I'd say there, if I saw it Tuesday before Thursday, numbers, then I I could make a make a vote, but today I can't, I can't commit to making that a resolution. G I S, eh, I, it's one of, one of higher up on my favorites list, I guess. But the top four, I mean, G I S is not something that's immediate either, and we've said all this all along. We're not in a hurry. We don't have to be in a hurry to win the money. So we can, we can, we can wait another meeting or another cycle of meetings. Let's get all the numbers though for hundred and sixty is one big project. Let's get all the numbers that are gonna go into it and take a look.
Commissioner.
I'm good with the top four.
Commissioner Rebecca?
Starting point.
I go to the top four. I'm very interested in the next two, um, but I got to sit down and talk to him about it a little bit more.
Okay. So we'll go ahead for next Thursday for the top four.
Right.
Okay.
Matter of fact, once we get the top four, maybe five and maybe six out of the way, maybe we'll just run through the waiting, see what we got left over and run the wait program another time, another thing, another way. It was pretty easy to do that waiting program, waiting, you know, you know.
Right, well, we have to make sure we're gonna get that second, second portion.
Well, this, this is buying us the time to do that, I guess, so that's good.
We don't know exactly. Okay.
Yeah.
Are we good with that? Item five, public comment. So any public comment in the room? Are you sure?
Yeah.
Public comment, come on out, ma'am.
Hi. Um, I saw the building and facility use request form, and I'm really excited to see um, we've been sort of managing that with extension um, on behalf of the annex um, since we've been back in the space, but we we also, I think, created the initial sort of structure of that, and um, a a couple of meetings ago, when for the committee of the whole, there were some questions about how it's currently managed in terms of the calendar. So we essentially create a calendar that looks like this, and then people block off time, and we we just keep it in a book written down. Um, and I understand there's a desire to move it to a digital calendar and have it visible so that um, so it can be managed differently. Um, my Michigan Health, who you talked to initially ha- has been working with us as a partner on um, community health education project. So I just some clarification about if there's, and this is more of a question, it's not really, it's sort of to inform what the eventual policy is, but if if there are organizations that we're partnering with as M S U extension, you know, is there a consideration that's different? And I'm not saying there should be, I'm just kind of asking the question and posing that um. Uh, and then, you know, for example, we just, we just um, photocopied some of the pages that show the groups that are using it. So S C S U has a a training program that they use it, I think, one day a month. They bring nurse trainees in um, and they they have sort of seminar um, classes for the day in in the building. Um, and then the regular meetings that happen, of course, nine one one um, and the zoning board and and other users in the building. Um, and then there are things that pop up, like there's a mental health training that's coming up, and honestly, when we asked around in the office, none of us who are there today knew who that was, but you know, we have staff out in in the field a lot. Um, so just kind of some clarity about who would be sort of like inside users and who are external users would be helpful. Um, and then if there's a visible calendar, if there's access to more than just um, Breck, who would take the money, and Mary, who's creating the calendar, so we can kind of see if someone calls us and asks. Um, we do use the space um, uh, West Branch is really well situated for, for example, district four staff, which are seven counties um, to come and uh, and have like regional meetings or or district-wide meetings, and just wanted to ask and make sure that that um, would still be allowed. The other thing that the policy mentions that's of interest is left as set up. So we can create a diagram. We're willing to do that. We've had it in the past. We've used it in other places. Just sort of shows like what the normal orientation of the tables and chairs would be, and maybe something like that for these rooms would be important too, so if someone does use it during the day and moves tables around, that it's, that it doesn't have to be completely reset multiple times during the day for your use and your meetings. Just um, didn't get here in time to make these comments at the beginning of the meeting to inform your discussion and didn't really feel like it was appropriate to just blurt it out while you were meeting. Um, but just some questions about those items um, and really appreciate that. Um, the other thing, just to be aware of with the annex, of course, we have meetings for our programs later in the evening. We have livestock committee meetings and and four H club meetings and things like that. Um, but like, if our staff is gone for the day, the only users of the building that are there right now are nine one one, and the rest of the entrances to that are controlled and locked. Um, so just to make sure that nine one one would know like who's using the building when, um, they're very aware. So sometimes, for example, I have meetings back to back that will leave me in the office until seven, and if they hear me moving around, they're kind of like, what's what's going on? And rightly so. I mean, they want to know who's in the building. We thought you were gone. What's happening? Um, and and I appreciate that they're really aware of what's happening in the building, but I wouldn't want them to be startled um, or unaware of what is planned for that. And in terms of access, if it's open, who then locks it up? I think nine one one can lock it, but I also know that they're there for a primary purpose, which is to, you know, dispatch um, law enforcement, but they also need to have assurance that that building's secure when they're engaged in their work. Because they're very focused on their work, um, and they they may hear things, but they also have to respond to situations that are going outside the building. So just some thinking through. Um, oh, I also wanted to mention that conference room, we divide it, just like these two rooms could be divided, so you could you could, someone could reserve both spaces, or they could reserve one of those spaces. We kind of think of them as a large room that can be divided into a large and medium room, and then there's a little tiny conference room, and I don't know if you want to include all three of those as separate spaces, or that large room is one space that can be divided by a room divider. So just some items to have in mind.
Geez, we added salsa.
I'm not saying anything about the U C, I don't, you know, go forward with that. Um.
If we make this digital, I think that that makes makes it wide open for all parties to see it. On the paper.
Right, well, I mean, most of the time people call us and we.
Right, but I mean, I mean, like.
It's not good.
Make it digital, then those regular parties, they can look at it, they can look at it.
Right, I'm just saying, make sure if it's digital, who can, who can view it and who can edit it? And that might be two different groups.
The the initial intent is that we're we're, we were, I was looking at going with Google Calendar. It would be a shared calendar for editing. You would be able to edit it, um, Jackie, because right, they're working off a paper calendar right now too.
Right.
It's insane, but the fact that we're 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 looking at, you know, there those standard meetings for internal and everything else, like that could be, you could have them scheduled on the calendar, everything else um, across the board, but the fact that we could make the calendar public for people or organizations that want to.
Sure.
Hey, I wonder, I wonder if the annex building is available without having to talk to somebody or whatever, like it's available online to our webs, you know, through the website to see if the annex building is available, and here's our policy, if you do want to rent it.
Right, okay. And yeah, I guess you'd want to also have it auditable, so you know who's paying, who needs to pay versus who doesn't need to pay, and did they pay and all that kind of stuff too, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, sorry to take up your time. I know it's between you and St. Patrick's Day.
But thank you very much. Any other public comment? Any public comment on the phone?
Just one thing for the board, um, just because it happened today. Uh, Randy got his remuneration contracts back. Um, he's ready to go on Thursday. If you're okay with it, it's a, these are routine contracts you do every year for the surveyor, for the peer review team, and for the project administrator. Uh, it's all grant-driven. Uh, he just didn't have it ready for this meeting, so if you'd like it to be on the next count, we could do that, but because it is so routine, I said I would ask you.
Nothing's new at all.
It's not. It's, the the contracts themselves are new because they went through our council, uh, but otherwise, the same people, same pricing, same.
Council approved them?
They did. It's been much longer now.
I don't have a problem with him being on there. Do you guys?
Oh, gosh, no. It's a routine thing, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. It'll be.
Any public comment on the phone? Got a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-two. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Get better at that.